By Lee, all those in favor? Aye. opposed? That carries six zero. On the consent agenda, tonight we have the check wire transfer dispersion, so we have the bank reconciliation statement for the rest of the nation's terminations and non-renewals as follows. Do you have a motion to accept the consent agenda tonight?
So?
By Dan?
Second motion?
By Rich, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That carries six zero. We have the resolution for gift acceptance. Now, the resolution for gift acceptance, whereas the following have generously donated, or offered to donate to the Breilich Schools monetarily fifty-one dollars and one cent from Sue Lindquist for the student scholarship program at Hidden Oaks, seventy-one dollars and fifty cents from Laurel Yanni House for the enhanced programming at Jeffers Pond Elementary School, and thirty-nine dollars from Shane and Abby Casera for enhanced programming at Jeffers Pond. The Athletic Boosters Association, LABC, donation to Lakers activity with the list attached. The attached list shows a contribution of forty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And I'll read through those because I think that's important. They do a tremendous help to our district. There's twenty-six thousand dollars to the Breilich High School Activities Department benefiting athletes. It's for the trainer, the conference dues, the shuttle bus, the head coach membership, and website video streaming. A thousand dollars for athletic awards and scholarships. Thirty-two hundred and thirty dollars to volleyball for uniforms. Six thousand dollars for wrestling for mats and singlets. Two thousand dollars for the boys and girls swim and dive team. Thirty-four hundred dollars for Nordic ski and uniforms. Fourteen hundred and thirty-one dollars for gymnastics for state meet expenses. Seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars for girls golf with golf shirts. And two thousand five hundred dollars for boys and girls track for pole vault poles. I commend them in their donation of that money. As listed in your board pack, there's the other monies that they've donated throughout the last few years, and they're a great asset to our community and to our athletes. So, thank you very much. Value and kind for school supplies for the staff at Ridges Hospital for the schools in our district. Whereas there's no conditions with these gifts, therefore be it resolved by the Breilich Savage Area School Board to gracefully accept these gifts. Do you have a motion to accept the gifts? By Lee?
Second.
By Dan, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed? That carries six zero. Thank you. That is a local, but sorry. Chad?
Aye.
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 Stacy? Todd? Aye.
Dan?
That carries six zero. Thank you. Moving on, we have Laker Pride. No Laker Pride tonight. Open forum, we have anyone who would like to address the board at this time? We have fifteen minutes to decide. Seeing none, we'll move on. Personnel items, man?
Good evening, members of the board. I approve. First, I recommend the following. Recommend the following candidate to the board's approval.
Do you have a motion to accept that? That is the one that is struck off there in your board pack. By Chad? Second?
Second.
By Stacy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero.
And next, I present the following leave of absence.
Do you have a motion to accept the leave of absences as follows?
Promote.
Lee?
Second.
Second by Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero.
And last, I have a staffing request from secondary schools. This is composed of a point one FTE at the middle level and a point two FTE at the high school. This will allow in both instances for some last minute section additions to keep class sizes at a manageable level in math at the high school and throughout the electric courses at the middle level and secondary.
Do you have a motion to accept the additional staffing at the secondary schools? By Chad?
Second?
Second by Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Moving on to old business, we have the synthetic turf options. And the board has held many meetings throughout the district, throughout the timeline over the last four months over this course, and we've come down to a couple different options. We had a committee open forum on July fifteenth, and we reviewed them at the August twelfth session. Brent, do you have a slide presentation for this?
Yes, good evening, I do have an update on some of the slides you've seen before, but we did make some tweaks to the Laker field options I thought we should see before taking any action, so. Go through these rather quickly because you've seen them many times before. Dan Patch option, I rounded the budget on two, I figured we'd be adding. So, Dan Patch option, we've just over a million dollars. Again, the stadium was designed for turf, and we'd be cleaning the work that was originally proposed when the building was built. The West High School option, updated that to include a perimeter fence around there. And just to, again, reiterate, put a backstop on the northwest corner there, and the entire softball field would be played on turf for that option. We did look at doing the entire high school practice field option. It's a large sheet of turf there, just about almost one point nine million. You know, the only drawbacks there, if you will, would be, you don't have lighting there. We've talked about that throughout the course of discussions. And our throwing, the track and field throwing events would be on turf. Right now, that budget does not include a perimeter fence. We looked at cutting down the high school practice field option, just a lower cost option. So, just over a million dollars. Again, the same hindrances as far as no lighting or seating, and it may cause you to actually have to relocate your throwing events as some of the discus area would be in turf. And then you do lose flexibility, as we've talked about many times before, where right now that, you know, it automatically sections off that whole pair of practice fields into two distinct areas. The tweaks that we want to show you tonight were the Laker field, we call it the varsity field option. This would enclose the regulation varsity sized soccer and lacrosse field. It also holds two fifty by eighty yard youth fields, east-west, as you can see. And we revised the track layout, the Fayette track layout, such that it would be a quarter mile track. So, from a practice standpoint, makes it run that circumstance. Again, the benefits of it being at this site are obviously are the grandstand and lighting. Then we also revised the, call it the youth field option here as well, a larger version at Laker Field, where you could actually put three youth fifty by eighty fields, crossways on there. It does make the track obviously a little longer, longer perimeter, takes it from a quarter mile track to a third of a mile track. I know against the Fayette, that's not an issue, it's not intended to be used for any competition events. And then lastly, the Laker option, where we could put in a competition sized field, plus have another competition sized track there. Get the, add the two numbers together there, the one point one would be eligible for lease levy for the turf. The five hundred eighty-five thousand for a new track would not be eligible for lease levy, that would have to come out of capital, so. So, to summarize, here's the list of the total dollar amount of each option. You can see the Laker field, five and six are the ones that changed from before. Going from two youth fields to three youth fields basically adds three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the total amount, goes from one point eight one to two point one seven. And as you all know, we have, in our budgeted plan, or kept in the plan, we have three point seven million allotted for turf projects. Refresh the timeline, tonight we're looking for a big take action on selecting the project scope. We would immediately work on getting the Minnesota Department of Education review and comment in, written and then submitted. The design will start right away, because we want to start working, get the survey process going slow, boring, and start working through the watershed districts to make sure that everything goes smoothly. We want the district to tour in September on October timeframe, to take you on tours of different fields in the metro area here, work with Eric and staff to, you know, really determine what type of turf you want to use, different types of sports, and let you, again, feel and touch and kick the ball on what you're looking at here, so. We'll do that in September, October, look into certified levy in December, have bid documents completed in January, bid in the January, February timeframe, and look to commence construction in May. Obviously, Dan Patch Stadium will be the second one we start, that has to wait until after graduation and until after presenting lacrosse play options of that nature, so that one. The second one, start the third one, start the fourth one. With that, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I do have Jay from Anderson Johnson here to answer any questions you have in details.
Could you go back to the slides? I know that the-
The new options?
Yeah. I know the numbers changed a little bit, but my slide was significantly different on the varsity field option at Laker. The one before that, I think. Oh, that is the right one, that's the right one. Because my screen, okay, you must have changed the track, which increased the-
It increased the size of the turf too.
Okay.
Because the ends, it was kind of a squared option.
Yep, that's what I have, alright.
And we decided that really wasn't, it works so well from a track standpoint, so I had it.
That's what we have on our screen, is the square one.
Yeah. We have the previous option where there wasn't quite as much turf, so the number just didn't quite add itself.
I think I made a note on there that was going to change.
Yep, right there, yep.
Didn't have it in our package.
We've had a board member or board members request that we take each option one by one, so I think we'll start basically with comments and questions on the Dan Patch Stadium, if we go back to that slide. Any questions for Brent on this option? I know the field is supposedly prepped for turf ten years ago when the field was installed, so I'm hoping that will did the right thing there and made sure we had what we had, so. Are there any questions from that, comments from the board?
Well, if it's already been prepped, do we still have to do all the soil boring? Is there possibly things that could pop up?
We do, I mean, that's what we have, we do have that budgeted in there yet for soil boring. Soil boring is about seven thousand dollars to do that.
But we're not expecting any surprises since it was already prepped for that?
Exactly, it's just more confirmation to make sure we know.
And this was the old side of the original high school where it was supposed to go.
Yeah.
And there were an extensive amount of borers done through that area.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? I know from the latest high school members, there's twenty-four hundred and forty-two students who'll benefit from this. To me, it's been something that's needed for the district. We have kind of called that the football field, when that really is not the intent, I think, of this district, that is the lacrosse, it's the soccer, it's the football field, and anybody else, Eric can put on that field, so it, in my mind, is very well used, so. I hate to see it sit around, it's an asset the community has, so. Are there any other comments or questions?
I just, as someone who was around and wanted to do turf, but ten years ago, this is long overdue. We just have too many kids wanting to do too many things, from band to football and lacrosse to Fayette, you name it. And I, this is something I don't think we really have a choice anymore. The field is expected to be used for too many events.
Yeah.
For a grass field, just the way it is.
Mike, we're discussing the Dan Patch option. They're broken down individually, so we'll take each one as we go. Welcome, by the way, you look cool.
Thank you for allowing me to spend time with the kids.
Yes.
It is warm out there.
Yes.
And as of right now, this is really our one usable track, so if we do put down the turf, it will allow us to use the one track more. Another point that I would like to make, it's not just the turf, it's also allows the track to be used more.
Any other comments or questions?
I would agree with Dan, I've been waiting for a turf on this field for a long, long time. And it will get used, it needs to get used all the time, and it will. And it'll get used during the school day, I mean, for classes as well as events, so it's the right thing to do for kids.
And I'll follow up with Lee's, I concur with her that it does conform to the intent of the law for lease levy for new educational space, so. With that in mind, I will vote for the Dan Patch Stadium.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have a motion to accept the Dan Patch option as illustrated to be submitted N V by Stacy? Second by Dan. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero. We'll move on to the Laker field option. Mike, it's a little bit different, the dimensions have changed mainly to space that out, we realized there was a space issue with the square field and also the track, which still allows then the kids to use the track for a middle school track, as we have, actually, I think Eric said that was one of our biggest participation sports that we had in the district, so.
Yeah, there's about two hundred kids that are off in middle school, six to eight.
Yep. So with that, that gives them a round of track rather than a square track to practice on, even though they hold their meets, and this would not be a track we would hold meets on, it would be a practice only, they still would hold us at the high school. Any comments or questions on?
Does it need any type of the quarter mile? Does it need any type of, could you do anything if you wanted to events wise on it?
Brent, that, you said that was a quarter mile, so it would be, it would work well for, like, all's classes only. And we're back to still practice on that at four hundred end.
Okay.
Remember, it's probably about four leagues. Fayette, that's about-
Seven, seven and eight, okay.
Is the, is the track covered by lease levy then, in that app, in that? I'm assuming we're voting on what's presented on the screen as we see it now, not what is in our board pack. As far as the dimension.
Right, yeah.
Yes, I think, I mean, you jumped me, you could do the squared option too, I think this works better from a track perspective, from a Fayette perspective. The track surface itself, that is a Fayette track, it is used for Fayette masses, so yes.
Okay.
Do we gain any space on the ends, or is it just the way it looks?
Yeah, you gain space, that's what, I think I asked the question earlier, the cost went up.
Yeah. Because of that space, okay.
You've noticed there's space between the fields that we needed with this option when we went inside, it was with them, there was very little, in fact, I think it was ten feet.
Right, I was just looking at the dimensions, they were still the same, so I just wanted to make sure that I had that right.
And as I mentioned, I quote there are the striping options, so the varsity field dimension is still what it is, two point five by two sixteen.
Okay.
But yes, you do gain on the ends, so.
Any other questions?
So, the only difference is just, again, that one versus this one is just the length. You gain one more youth field.
I'd like to point out that the kids who have access to this are both the elementaries and both middle schools. Twenty-four hundred and sixty kids as of today's count, so actually more kids are available to this field than on the high school field, so. And I think it'll be well used, I know the Fayette people have already contacted me and said, "We need this," so. Fields out there are tough, they're in tough shape, a lot of use, and if we can take away some of the use from the other fields, it's the right thing to do for them, so. Anyone else?
I could just add that, in my mind, this is a community asset that we'd be building at the Laker option varsity field, because it would increase the availability of our fields for our students, both at Hidden Oaks and at Twin Oaks. Westwood and Edgewood are right next door, so they would also have access to this space during the school day and to the track. So, to me, that makes a huge difference in the positioning of this, plus it has the seating for fans as well as the lighting already installed. So, there are a lot of reasons why this field, I think, makes a lot of sense for our students and for our community.
I'd only comment that this field currently is really not used very much because of the condition of the field itself. So, it's going to allow, like Samantha said, a lot of availability for everybody to use it. So, I mean, it's a bonus, I don't want to say bonus field, but it'll be an addition to our fleet of fields, I guess.
I can say one more thing, since I've been here, Darryl Burshardt has told, talked about, and Jim Dowell, about trying to rest a field, the fact that we, our fields are used so repetitively that they get ground down, and they don't have a chance to rest. And having a piece of turf at Laker Field would allow us to use the rest of the acreage there to rest a field and grow a field, as well as to use the other fields that are also available. So, I think not only would it allow us to have a piece of turf, but it would also allow us to have our other fields in better condition than they are today.
Thank you. Mike?
I see that this one is wider than what Dan Patch would be, so I'm assuming that, I believe both soccer and lacrosse, they typically are a wider field than football, or am I mistaken?
Lacrosse is not.
No?
Soccer is. Girls' lacrosse is about the same as soccer, boys' lacrosse is-
Yeah, okay. So, the width actually makes this more suitable for varsity competitions, presumably, or?
No, I, I mean, I truly believe we'll continue to provide a lot of field investment.
Okay.
My main reason, we widened it, widened it, took four lane track and moved it up tight to the grandstand and then tight to the west, to the lake holes.
Okay.
And tried to maximize the east-west dimension, so you can use fields for crossways.
Okay, so the width actually makes it more community purpose than varsity event purpose?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
It will be soccer, it would be, it's more ideal for size as far as width wise, if we're playing that lane.
Okay.
It would be, was seventy-five, stays?
Yeah, it can go to eighty.
Eighty.
Any other questions, comments?
With the, I guess the question I had, I was the one that encouraged you guys to design something with every last possible area and turf you could fit here, and the next one we're going to talk about has that. And, so the question is, there is a four, almost a four hundred thousand dollar difference in these two, and so I don't see a middle school principal here. My question would be, between these two, is the youth field option overkill? Would there be instances during the school day where that would be full of kids at Fayette at the same time? Would anybody have the, I mean, I, I'm leaning toward being in favor of a second option over it at this field, but the question is, is it worth four hundred thousand more dollars to add basically one space? What are we gaining during the school day? Because that's my biggest concern.
I can speak to it just in general terms, and that is that we do have Fayette classes running throughout the school day, so with a piece of turf that large, there would be opportunities for multiple classes to use it at one time. So, there is that, I know there are students out there during the spring and fall months, this would extend that season, taking into early spring and to really late fall, for us to use those fields during the school day. For the middle school track, that would be a benefit for them to do all the practices there, and I would think that we would have some of the other practices, Eric, didn't you speak to some of the practices, eighth and ninth and tenth grade practices being here?
Going to lower level lacrosse and things like that.
Yeah, that would happen also at this field after school, so I see it as a benefit, and certainly in keeping with the lease levy guidelines, that this should be educational space that is used by our students during the school day. As Stacy said, we don't have that, that space is now in such a repair that it isn't used, and they use other options just by staying inside or going to a different spot, because it is, the track is demolished, basically.
Mike?
For middle school track, my daughter participated for the last three years, I know they do long jump and is it high jump? So, would that aspect of the field be improved also as part of this plan?
I just know that when it's existing amenities there, they want to qualify at lease levy, but if you see on the bottom of the screen there on the lower right recircus, the field events?
Yep.
It's forty-five thousand, they'd have to come out of funds on capital.
So, the reason why it doesn't qualify is because they're adequate as they are?
Lease levy is only a view for something new, new instructional spaces, those instructional spaces are existing, so.
Even though they're in disrepair? Okay.
I'll make a comment here, I'll find out. As many of you know, I've struggled with this on a needs versus wants type basis, but tonight I won't be able to vote for this option for three reasons. One, we haven't let out the bids for the new addition yet, we don't know what the final budget for that is going to be. We have not yet refinanced the bonds to lower our mortgage payment, so we don't really know exactly what our lease levy amount is going to be to keep that a tax neutral position. And another reason is, I hate to use up all the lease levy cap we have, and in the event when full day kindergarten comes on board, we won't have the needed ability to add space, whether at the kindergarten level or additional space at the school buildings. And last, I don't think it really fits with our ability to be an environmentally sustainable focus that district strives for. So, for those reasons, I will not be able to vote for this option.
Anyone else?
Well, my main point is that we, the amount that we would save not doing it this year is not much, and we also have a lot of irons in the fire right now. I'd like to not do it this year, so I also couldn't support this at this time.
Anyone have any further comments?
I have a question, so, just so I'm clear, what are you saying no to both of these options? Because I'm a little confused what we're talking about. Are we talking about Laker option number one or Laker option number two?
Any of the Laker options.
Okay.
And Rich, I have to respectfully disagree with you, I think the amount of students that will access this field, even though we're nowhere near what we had budgeted for, to take twenty-four hundred and sixty kids and say, "No, you can't have it," but you take fewer kids to the high school and say, "Yes, you can have it," I think is a disservice to every student in this district. Environmentally friendly, I think probably the chemicals and stuff we put on the field are worse than what is here, and I'm no expert in that, but I think we deserve it to the kids of the district to provide with them a place to hold their events. We know our fields are in bad shape, and I'd like to hear some of the people on which option they prefer, or if we should even go through with it.
Well, I'm very much in support of putting turf on Laker, Laker Field, for the same reasons we're putting it on Dan Patch. It services our kids, and a lot of them, and we need to be able to do that, and I feel pretty comfortable with where the money is at, that we have it, that we can use it, and I don't think we should be keeping, holding on to it when we do have it to use, and it can benefit the kids that are here now, not five years from now. But having said that, I would be more in favor of the first option, the new option you gave tonight. That one. Because I think that meets the needs that we have. The other one would be great to have, but I think it's a little bit of a stretch. I don't know that we need that right now. But I would definitely support this for all the same reasons. If it's, you know, if we want to do something for our high school kids and some middle school, why wouldn't we want to do it for elementary and the rest of the community? So, I will support a varsity field and this option.
Julie, is any of this money that we're using for this coming out of the refinancing of the bonds?
Do you still plan to refinance the bonds? Because of what happened at the legislative level at the end of May and equity funding cap, we are getting a change of the first $300 of our, the current dollars, operating hundred and dollars. We have a little bit of wiggle room, so we're looking at some different options to bring that to the board, whether it's to refinance now, refinance a little bit later to get closer to refinancing date, or, you know, and when all these things will come into play. So, all of those things are factors, and we're looking at them, those bonds can be refinanced at some point in the winter.
I guess I'll go with what I'm thinking. I'm a big proponent of turf. If it was, if we had enough money, I think I would do three fields. I see the use. I have had two kids go through the high school and middle school programs. I know the amount of kids that use these fields, that, you know, people, I think in this community, want to keep their kids active. And it's an important part of activities. And what happens here during the day and even after school affects them, their education as a whole. So, I do think it's an important part of our program. That being said, I do realize it's important to stay within the budget. And so, looking at that, that I feel we have to stay within the two fields. I'm thinking along the lines of what Lee was saying. I think the varsity field option here, you know, keeps the integrity of basically what the field looks like now and just enhances what we have. And so, between that and Dan Patch, that leaves us a pretty comfortable amount of money left within the levying amount. So, that's what I would do in favor.
Any other comments?
Comment, a question. After seeing these, I'm leaning toward the option that's on the screen before us. But I share Rich's concern with the high school budget. We've been talking about it for a number of months, and I'm yet to be convinced that that budget is gonna, is gonna hold. Having said that, what are the boards? What are we allowed to do as far as, let's say, you know, the sky falls and the high school budget numbers come in at some ridiculous number, let's say nine point something? Not likely, but let's just... Do we have the freedom to say, if we approve this tonight, to say, put the brakes on one of these and say, "The high school's obviously priority." We're gonna have to say no to this second option, even though we've already voted on it. How does that work for them?
We do, and Brent can explain.
I think, I just make a suggestion tonight, just pick which combination of projects, turf projects that you do. It just authorizes to enhance what we're doing.
Okay.
And that process, as we all know, takes a while, and by then, the high school will be busy. Just because you can move comment authority to do two point eight seven five million, this doesn't mean you just, you know, spend, you don't certify your levy until later in this calendar. Yes, you do have the flexibility. Keep this moving forward along the timeline and then have the flexibility to see the high school business.
If we don't certify the funds for this at the December meeting, any project can be pulled on and it can be brought back soon.
And having said that, we have, the preliminary certification is in September. So, that's why this is timely at this point and why we need to move forward tonight.
So, you can certify this preliminary amount, you know, you always go down, you can never go up.
That's actually right.
Any other comments? Have a motion for one of the fields?
I'll make a motion for that field.
That's that Laker Varsity option.
I would call it Laker Option Varsity Field. One second.
Stacy? Any other comments? All those in favor? I opposed?
No.
No.
That carries five, two. We'll move on to option three, which is the West Field Physical Education Area Softball Field option. Any comments or questions on this? Dan?
This is one that I just don't think we have a chance to tackle. This, to me, is clearly a want and not something that we need. Coming off this, this spring, it might seem like a need, but I think we're gonna have to, in my opinion, we're gonna have to say no to this one and hope it doesn't rain for three straight months again.
Any other comments?
I'll make a comment. This would have been my third field, if I would have had my cake and eaten it too. But this being said, on this is, I think, for me, what this is kind of brought about and how what Sue Ann has said and others have said, is this will allow us to rest some fields, being able to have some of the turf. This, as well as, these two fields on the west side, as well as the football practice field, are pretty much concrete come summer. And so, I think we need to make sure that if anything, we start to budget some dollars towards enhancement of our current grass fields. Because I've been around to a lot of fields, a lot of different high schools, and ours by far rank some of the worst in the South Suburban. So, it becomes a safety issue when kids fall and hit. They play soccer, they play softball on here, football. I mean, kids are getting injured, and so I would just say that we need to really look at some improvements from a grass standpoint at this, for these fields.
I'd love to see these fields here, but based on my previous comments and the comments of the board, the physically responsible thing to do is to wait on that third field and with the hope that we can rest enough fields to have decent fields to use in the area. So, I would probably not support this, and financially, it's pushing it.
Any further comments? I too think we should probably wait on this one. I know there's a need for these fields, but let's get the high school in line and the other fields. I have been exploring some other partnerships with some other people in the district, but have nothing to announce yet. There's a lot of good intention in our community. We fully support any, any group that would like to come out and speak with us and partner with us on some of these fields if they feel that there's a need. But at this time, I'm gonna withstand from commenting they're, they're great groups. I hopefully will work something out, but nothing to report on that front. So, with that, do I have a motion to accept this or a motion to table the West Field option?
I love tables. Just vote it out.
Just vote on it.
I don't think there's been any motion.
No, there's been no motion.
So, there's no, we need to do nothing?
If you're happy with that, we can leave it open and...
I wasn't good at grammar.
Move on. Okay. We'll move on. Thanks, Brent.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, the Prior Lake High School construction update.
Evening, board members. Thought this was gonna be a very uneventful presentation, but Mother Nature has kind of changed that for us. So, I'm here to report on all the construction that we've been doing and are continuing to do. That is the phase one building improvements, which we are done with. Just closed out documents left and a bunch of things like that. We did, bid group two, which is the building envelope. I did bring some pictures for that, not very exciting at all. And then the ones we are out or bid on now, which is the phase two building improvements. And then, just to give you an update on the 2014 building improvements. Group A bid group one, Hidden Oaks, Westwood and Five Oaks. Did you get our certificate of occupancy, written punch list, commission and warranty? Our boiler rooms are busy still with contractors, and their deadline was September 20th with the endem we put out last year. As you know, there is no cooling at Hidden Oaks. We do have a chiller startup date through September 9th, but that doesn't guarantee we'll have cooling tonight or 10th. Usually takes a couple of days. There's a lot of checklists that have to be met, water quality, making sure we're not warrant, avoiding any warranties. So, we'll do our best. If everything goes right, we could see some, but those 90s will probably turn into 70s by then. The bid group two update, we are complete at Glendale, Edgewood, Five Oaks and all those elementary schools. The Grainwood, we just have one window, only time that we'll be putting in is soon as it comes in. Expect six, eight weeks before that's done. And then the District Service Center here, we do have a infill for our new boiler room. Right now, it's sandblasted. Doesn't look kind of shoddy from the outside, but we will be putting that as soon as we get that infill. So, there's no patching, patching there. Then the group, phase two, excuse me, for the building improvements, we do open bids the 12th of September for this building, Glendale and Grainwood. The group A for next year, Twin Oaks Middle School, we will have a meeting next month for a fifty percent owner review. October, excuse me, will be at ninety-five. And then issue bid documents November, call for bids December, and group contracts in January. So, it's a lot better scheduled than we were dealing with last year, as far as opening bids. And should get real good pricing then. Contractors will have all their bonding capabilities open and hopefully give us good pricing. I did take some pictures. This was just a couple hours ago at Hidden Oaks. This is what we're doing. We're doing the best we can with some temp units. These are three-ton units, and there's four of them throughout the building. We are using one of the existing units for the media center, and it actually does feel a lot better in there when I walked through just an hour ago, two hours ago. I'm sure when the bodies come in tomorrow, it's going to struggle a few. It looks like 90s for the rest of this week. I'm sure you've probably given some comments. We could see one of the news buses or vans outside at ninety. I told you, I was hoping this would be boring, so these pictures I'll go through quick. This is Edgewood, we re-cocked that blue base outside. We also did some vent repairs, these brick vents, there is a UL degradation, UPL degradation in the, and that's one of the new ones. We also replaced some bricks, and that even helps. There you can kind of see in the middle of the screen, there was a lintel at Grainwood that we replaced those bricks. They're all cracking out of there. Side of the building also had a lot of black through water in the years. Cleaned that up. This is the, the C just out behind us here. Sandblasted all that, and that's the shape it's in right now, and of course, we'll paint that. Also, we've ground out some of the cracks and will refill them. This is just a cock joint for expansion movement of the building. These go bad in seven to ten years, depending on sunlight, what they're facing. The windows, we re-cocked them as well at Grainwood. At Glendale, there was a bottom lip that white block there is actually inserted, and a lot of degradation around the bottom. So, we re-ground that and re-cocked pointed there. And this is just two of the cock joints on each side of that white brick. A lot of fun things, some of the work we've been doing.
Any questions on the update there? No.
Do you have those air conditioning units in Hidden Oaks today, or did they just come this afternoon?
They were here at 10:30. They actually take quite a bit of, they're kind of like a welder. You gotta get a panel, you gotta get condensate, and you gotta exhaust.
Okay.
By three, I think they're all up and running.
Okay.
Jim called me yesterday to get them.
I was by there, and I just have a comment. I was by there today three times, and the kids were phenomenal, the staff. I appreciate what they've done. They've been phenomenal throughout this. Contrary to Channel Nine's report at 5:30, it was not 96 degrees in our buildings. I was there, the one room that they happened to be in was 86, but it was a fax lab that we were not using. It was a cooking and oven lab, which I have my suspicions at what happened in there, but I don't know. It was not, it was 86 in there when I was in there at 1:30 today, so, and the kids left soon after, so it wasn't even occupied. So, I commend the staff, the principals, the district gym, your group. You've done a good job today. We've had a lot of donations from the community and I appreciate those. We have parents dropping off fans, fans from the businesses arrived today, water arrived. All in all, a very good coordinated effort. And I asked the kids how it was today, and I got the report that it was school and they were fine, so... Not happy to be back, some of them, but I don't think the heat had anything to do with not happy to be back, so... Lunchroom was even, it seemed cooler than the rest of the building, so went well. Do you have any comments about today?
Yes, I visited both schools as well, and I know you also put one of these cooling units over at Westwood today as well, and that'll be up and going tomorrow. And Jim has talked about maybe adding a few additional ones at Westwood.
Model that works. Get some challenges, go get the heat out and the water, but they make different models, so we're working with the vendor to get smaller units that are easier to...
But again, the students were great. PTCs donated water, and moms were there, refilling water bottles for students at Westwood, putting ice in the bottles. They handed out ice blocks or icies to each of the classes this afternoon. So, it was, all in all, every student I saw had a smile on their face. I checked with the nurse at Westwood, there had been no complaints today. The students were all doing just fine. So, I think that was a good thing, too. I know our parents are preparing their children by keeping them dressed in light colors and loosely fitted clothing, et cetera, et cetera. And it was nice to see they actually did that today, and the students seemed to be very comfortable.
Sure did.
Regarding the air conditioning, this is new information. Is your intention to potentially have some cooling around the night?
We've started many units of work typically at the two days start. Typically, they don't have everything in line, controls have to be running. So, obviously, we'll try our best for it.
And you're probably right, it's been a cool offer shortly, and it won't be issued, but it is your intention to have those units operational so that in the spring, if this happens, it's just turned on?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, based on your schedule for next year, can this be avoided at, at Twin Oaks?
Nope. We'll try our best.
And when you talked about operational, you talked about Hidden Oaks. Were you also thinking Westwood for the September date?
Westwood actually will be, should be before that. We're hoping within a week or so. We've, the chiller remained on site for that unit. They actually have what they left with last fall, with the same equipment. We added some units to the cafeteria in the kids company, in the kitchen. But everything they had last year should be up and running. But Westwood, yes, we hope to get it out by at least week or five.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the advertised for bids for the addition of the Prior Lake High School.
Good evening, Chair Thornton, Dr. Gruber, School Board. I have before you a request for bid advertisement for the high school addition, and I'm looking for board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the advertisement for bids for the addition of the high school? By Dan?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich. Questions? You know, we've gone through this many times. I think we've finally come up with the right plan. So. Any questions, comments? I have a motion, a second, all those in favor? I opposed. That carries seven zero. Thank you. We have policies. We have the first reading of Policy five oh two, Policy five oh six dot two and Policy five twenty-one. The second reading will take place in September on the ninth board meeting. You guys have had those policies, any questions or comments on any of those policies?
On the first reads?
Yeah, I didn't see anything when I went through them. Anyone else? Jeff, any comments about those or?
Just looking at five oh two.
Okay.
This is a policy that we looked at several weeks ago. For the most part, there is only one change that we have taken out of policy. It's not appropriate at this point to have that in there. That type of search for, for students that would be affected by school personnel, how he conducts it by authorities. Situation changes, otherwise, the other types of searches here and everything else is pretty consistent with the, the label.
Any questions about five oh two or any? Okay, we'll move on to Policy five oh one dot two, the fund balance policy. Any questions or comments on that policy that was the increase of the fund balance?
Actually, could I go back to the prior policy? I was just thinking, since we removed that, could we leave it in there and just saying strip searches will not be done by, or strip searches if done would be by law enforcement officers? That would be one way I would go about it, rather than saying, you know, just crossing out that we would do it, just say we will do it and it won't be us.
As strip searches.
You know, something like that, I, we avoid.
Even mentioning?
That's just not something that we were doing in that type of, if we're looking for time for ban, if there's an imminent threat, if we, if school resources officer, we need to solve it.
I'm just saying that we'd say that we won't do it, instead of just removing that we, that, the way we would do it, just say we won't do it.
Well, I think our thinking was, since it's a procedural steps, this is something that we would never do and have a procedure for, basically.
And we don't list things we don't do.
And we don't list things we don't do.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, see, if we, we list things we don't do.
There'd be a lot.
That'd be a lot more and that'd be a law enforcement action, so. Any other comments, questions on that one? I'll move on to seven oh one dot two, the fund balance policy.
This is just bringing us back for a last approval.
Okay. Any other, Rich?
Yes, I did receive them, thank you very much to Julie and her staff for compiling that interesting data. And with that information, I'll, I have no problem with going ahead with the fund balance.
I'm getting confused here, that would've been a second reading and we have other ones for first reading and I don't have it on my agenda.
We don't, I don't, we have a second.
We don't have a copy.
It's not listed.
No, it's on paper one either. That's the fund balance policy that we had last time we were gonna vote on.
Oh, we were gonna do the second read the last time.
But it's not on our agenda, is all I'm saying, I don't have it on the agenda as to do a second read on it.
I do have it on the paper that we're gonna have the vote on it, I just don't have the paper copy of it.
It's not listed at all, I don't have it at all.
On the agenda?
Yeah, not on the agenda.
Not on this.
It's not on the agenda.
Another copy in the body of the document.
I don't have it on my screen.
On page?
If you.
Two, three?
Should be on page, well, three or four, I think. Be on four.
That's the proper ministry reports?
No. That's the supporting documents.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it on page five. We, we can, we can bring it back again.
I'm not opposed to it, I was ready to do it last week. I just couldn't find it on here.
Okay, Devon?
I'll second it.
Our policy committee.
Wherever it is.
Stacy Lee. Any other further questions on that? All those in favor?
I opposed. That carries seven zero.
Move on to administrative reports.
Last week was, we started last week with our welcome back for all of our staff members. We had our teachers back and many of our educational support staff back on Wednesday morning for our all-school. Welcome back, at the same time, we were doing that, our Prior Lake Rotary was giving the check to Mr. Rodine, who was, was here a minute ago, for our LABC and PAA for their efforts and the community's efforts during the Prior Lake Rotary's Music Fest. A check for seven thousand and sixty-five dollars was given to our Patrons of the Arts and fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars was given to LABC from the Prior Lake Rotary for a grand total of twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars. In addition to that, our volunteers gave five hundred and fifty hours. That's a lot of hours toward this event. So that culminated last week and there was a press release that the Rotary did for that. And then on Saturday night was the Summer Smash Event, our Laker Educational Foundation Event, and that was a well-attended. Todd Sorensen and I were there, as well as Rich Wolf and his wife, it was a lovely evening. And they did have a fund to need for our Bridges Alternative Learning Center to provide a set of Chromebooks. And they did reach that within about four minutes that evening, with very generous donors, that everyone came together and were able to raise over six thousand dollars so that a cart of Chromebooks could be provided for our Alternative Learning Center just this fall, so we're very excited about that. And then, of course, it got very hot. So throughout the weekend, we've been, Jim Delwa has been working very hard with his grounds crew to make sure our buildings were ready and now to make sure that they could also be cooled. So, this morning, we had the highest enrollment we've ever had come to our schools, for just under seven thousand five hundred students in our schools. And they all arrived and they all got to the places they needed to be. Now tomorrow will be the first day for kindergarten, but for all of our grades one through twelve, they did arrive. And we, I did send out a news alert last night just to all of our families and staff members, reminding them to dress their children appropriately because today was a hot day. As I mentioned earlier, both Todd and I were through our schools today, visiting them several times to see how they were doing. And they made it, it wasn't as pleasant as we would like our first day of school, temperature-wise, but certainly, it wasn't TV newsworthy, I didn't think, in the sense that we had lots of water, we were hydrating the children, we weren't going out into the hot sun. We tried very hard to keep them in, in a very comfortable situation throughout their school day and to get them home safely. So, that is accomplished, the first day of school is completed and we're getting ready for the second day and we're hopeful that both Hidden Oaks are two buildings that don't have complete air conditioning throughout the building. Hidden Oaks and Westwood will be even cooler tomorrow. And with the temperatures and the nighttime drop and just a little bit lower, that's gonna help as well. But we know throughout this week that we'll be close to pushing ninety all week long and could even do that next week. So, throughout this heavy time of high heat, we will encourage parents to continue to send their children in appropriate clothing and to send them with water bottles. Although, I have to say, our Prior Lake businesses came through again for us this morning. And they provided, they went out into the community, our Prior Lake Business Group went out into our community and both between today and tomorrow, they will have given us thirteen hundred and seventy bottles of water. They put them at Westwood and at Hidden Oaks so that students that don't have water bottles have access to water. They've been just phenomenal, so to Mike Stoudt and Sue Gaynor who have done this, thank you, on behalf of all of our students. Our PTCs have been fabulous as we've gone through this day, they've really been helpful. Hats off to our administrators who have helped lead the effort to get our schools up and going today and to make sure that our students had just a phenomenal first day. And that was for our two schools that had major renovations, all of our other schools have working air conditioning, they've had a good day also. Everything has gone very, very well for, for the first day of school. And we're ready for day two, bring it on. So that, that's really my.
Good, thank you. Any other administrative reports? Sure.
I just wanted to give a quick update, our audit is complete and all the field work is completed, I should say, we should be getting reports sometime late October, we're doing well. Every year it gets a little bit better as we move forward and so I want you to be aware of that. And also the levies, certification process, as you know, we have to have all our information approved for the preliminary levy by September thirtieth. However, they've given us one week to get all the information in the system because it's so, such a change in all of our levies for this year, so. It's gonna be a really quick turnaround, hopefully we can get all the information as quickly as possible. That will be coming forward for board and issue next year.
Thank you. Any other administrative? Move on to board reports and put the pressure on Adam, any reports from student council? It's your, your moment of fame here. You guys have been busy.
First day, our first meeting, our first school meeting is tomorrow, we've got three summer meetings. We decided on a whole coming team, which is party at Gatsby's. And it started so fast.
Good, I know the, we've had a lot of comments about the reception for the new kids, the ninth graders coming in, welcome back night was a phenomenal success. Students were a little embarrassed with the clapping, but the parents who came loved it, so it was a nice welcome back, so.
How's the floor?
It's good, it's good.
No one broke a phone?
No.
Just, I, I would say it's a little bit noisier, but not much, I mean, it, it first day of school, you can't judge it and it's noisy, so. Any other board reports?
Just one, Southwest Metro, they have a change to the Joint Powers Agreement, so that will be, and has to make the round between all the districts. We're at the end of the list, so it'll be coming. Minor changes to that document and it'll have to be voted on by the.
Thanks, by the way, for picking that up. You got any? How's the football? Any other board reports? Seeing none. Future events, we have the joint board meeting with the City of Savage on December ninth at six o'clock here in, I'm sorry, September, what did I say? September ninth, District Service Center here, Savage and us as a joint board meeting. And the regular board meeting on September ninth, following that, at seven o'clock. Anyone else have any further business? Seeing none, do I motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will make a motion.
Second?
Second.
By Stacy, all those in favor?
I am opposed.
Carry seven zero.